So, last year, the members of the council no longer received this benefit of CNA, but only the other employees, which are not public officials, but rank and file employees of the City of Osami, so my president, I recommend that this circular of the DBN on the CNA be generated in the records of this council.
Yes, item number 7 manifested by the honorable Majority Floor Leader that this be recorded in the CNA and sent it for fiscal year due to be referred to the City Council and this be just duly noted.
Item number 8, second number legal resolution number 1 to 5 to 24 approving our resolution number 4, 6 to 2023 approving the five programs, pages and activities of PPS of the 2023 general fund, the winter budget number 7, in amount of 20 million, 22 million, 9,000, we integrated in the 2023 settlement program, I can recommend that this will be generated in the records of the council.
Item number 8 on resolution number 1 to 5 to 24 manifested by the honorable Majority Floor Leader that this be just duly noted.
Thank you, number 7. Item number 9, second number legal resolution number 1 to 6 to 24 approving resolution number 5 to 6, the 2023 approving the settlement program of the 2023 special account, SB3 for 5 million, 74,000. Again, I recommend that this is paid by legal resolution, we just generate in the records, city council.
Item number 9 manifested by the honorable Majority Floor Leader that this be just duly noted.
Thank you, number 10, second number legal resolution number 1 to 7 to 24 approving resolution number 3 to 9, the 2023 approving the settlement program, 2023 general fund, SB6, the amount of 45 million, 16,000, 2023, again, I recommend that you generate in the records of the council.
Item number 10 manifested by the honorable Majority Floor Leader that this be just duly noted.
Number 11, DSG Regentin Advisory, dated February 1, 2024, subject submission of prior support, the weekly up drive for the barangays, I think this was taken already by the barangays during their monthly meeting about the weekly up drive for the barangays. I think there was even a contest with awards, the newest barangay in the city. In the meantime, I recommend that this advisory, the DSG be just duly noted in the records, city council.
Item number 11 presented by the honorable Majority Floor Leader, this be just duly noted.
Number 12, DSG Regentin Message, dated February 6, 2024, subject dissemination of number 24 to 17, dated February 2023, 17, the local legislators, League of the Philippines, 4L National Summit on March 21, 2024, this concern of the legislators, namely Honorable Dolly Brittes, Honorable Catherine, Honorable Batyon, Avila, Honorable Dizel Yoko, the District League Philippines, National Summit on March 21 to 24, this year, I again recommend that this be generated in the records of the council.
Thank you, honorable Majority Floor Leader. Any manifestation from the 4L, the lady legislators who are going to this summit conference, Ngatong Mutanan, lady legislators, honorable Sepres, honorable Lim, honorable Secelco, honorable Batyon.
Perhaps this includes the Basmi Rosso, Basmi Rosso must be on.
And that will be on March 21 to 23, okay? If ever you're going to go, so just please signify and inform the city beyond noted, honorable Majority Floor Leader.
This will be held in Iloilo, Iloilo, the municipal center, Iloilo City.
Iloilo. Iloilo. Saabot pa, oh sige. Aspigo ay hin, honorable Majority.
Thank you, honorable Chair. Number 13 and number 14 are various financial statements and cast flows of fines opposition of the GIO, the tax fund and general fund, various preliminary financial statements on the record, city council secretary, which may be available anytime upon the month of November, also by the council, I also recommend that this various financial statements of tax fund and general fund be just duly noted in the records, honorable Chair.
Noted, honorable Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you, honorable Chair. Item number 8, there are no committee reports submitted, my president, item number 9, the testing, and the same business, we have seven, approve issues, honorable Chair. The first objection is an ordinance relating the sale and possession of in city liquor in City of Osami. Everybody has given a copy of this ordinance, but may I just recall that an ordinance was passed already on the first and second reading, last, no, passed in the past reading, last June 13, 2023, last year, and we've been held a committee hearing, joint committee hearing, on 10/13, and a committee report was submitted on July 3, on this ordinance of the same title, however, there are some differences in the ordinance, and may I cite you the differences? In the previous terms, there is no, in the new ordinance, there is no comparison of britannic and chemical test, and failed survival test. In the old ordinance, the charge for rising sale is 1.5% or 2,000 sales, but in this new ordinance, the charge is only 1%. 1% of the television, or 1,000 per annum, which even is higher, and the license to serve decor is one for every table, a four, the same as in the new, the boss ordinance, honorable Chair. And the penalties are the same, honorable Chair. So, we already have a committee hearing, and we already have a committee report, and only slight differences, honorable Chair. So, my motion now is to sit aside this previous ordinance, which is approved on the past reading, where we have a committee hearing and committee report, and I would recommend that this new ordinance of same title be approved on the past reading, honorable Chair, because this ordinance, new ordinance, will complement our interim ordinance on ECP, special just permit, honorable Chair. So, I move to dispense with the previous ordinance and for approval of this new ordinance of same title, we point everybody copy, for approval of the past reading on just motion, honorable Chair.
This ordinance now regulating the sale and consumption of intoxicating liquor in the City of Osami, this will be.
So, my president, the previous ordinance was already approved, past reading, last June 13, last year.
So, therefore, this ordinance will.
Approved on the past reading.
Will be approved on the first reading.
Sit aside the previous one.
Sitting aside the previous one.
Which is already approved, because of the differences.
So, this ordinance be approved in the first reading, sitting aside the previous ordinance, motion approved.
Thank you, honorable Chair, and we'll determine if there's an necessity of conducting committee hearing, because we already had a committee hearing before on July 15, last year, on this ordinance, the only difference that this time, the charge for the permit to, for the license to serve is 1% of the contribution, or 1,000 per annum, which even is higher. Before, the committee hearing was, the charge of capital sale is only 1.5% or 2,000 sales, sales, delay is capital, the total sales, sauna, prekaron, 1% of the capital for 1,000 per annum, which even is higher. At the next session, sa, committee on the industry, honorable Lim, committee on Los Estello, honorable Lau. My committee on finance, official, for committee of honorable Xizo, can read my session on the ordinance, co angay at the committee hearing, the committee hearing may last year, although suspended it, because the city mayor delivered it until our CLP and so on last will be on hand, una tongi depes sa, last year, and approval of second reading, una tai, committee hearing, public hearing, na tai, committee report, na tongi adapt, so monei latero. Thank you, Ma'am Joy Almeida, for reminding me of this. So, we have to study first if we have, to conduct committee hearing, honorable Chair.
Okay, so this will be referred to the joint committees.
Yes, honorable Chair, in the meantime, I move for approval on the first reading, without reservations.
Approved on the first reading, by reservations.
Without reservations, honorable Chair, first reading only.
First reading only, and be referred to the joint committees as mentioned earlier, motion approved.
Thank you, honorable Chair, approval decision number 2, a resolution addressing authority on me is a bala, si bala, officer in charge, city legal to represent the local government of Sami city, indemnization of explosion cases pending in the regional trial court, 15, Osami city, I move, honorable Chair, for approval on the first reading, reservations, honorable Chair.
Move by the honorable Majority Floor Leader to approve this, the first reading with reservation, motion approved.
Due to the urgent public interest, as the magician is sorry, in our, in our decisions before the RTC of Sami, I move this motion for approval of this resolution, addressing authority on me is bala, officer in charge, city legal, represent the GIO Sami, indemnization of our cases pending before the RTC, 15, Osami city, for approval of second and final reading, waving the internal rules, honorable Chair.
Due to the urgency of this request resolution, move by the honorable Majority Floor Leader that this be just, be passed on the second and final reading, this resolution of the rising authority on me is bala, officer in charge of the city legal department, city legal, to represent the local government unit of Osami city, indemnization of ex preparation cases pending in the regional trial court, 15, Osami, move for its approval on the second and final reading.
Thank you, honorable Chair, approval decision number 3, a resolution approving the conduct of field validation activity from 21 February to April 5, 2024 by the PSA Provincial Office in Osami city, and now here to, the council, the committee, the first, honorable Chair, to introduce, and it will actually, honorable Chair.
Honorable Romero, your data record, please.
Number 3. Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Madam Chair, I move to pass a resolution approving the conduct of field validation activity from 21 February to April 5, 2024 by the PSA Provincial Office in Osami city, passing this for first reading with reservation, Madam Chair.
Passing this on the first reading with reservation, motion approved.
Due to the interest of public service, Madam Chair, I move to pass this resolution approving the conduct of field validation activity from 21 February to April 5, 2024 by PSA Provincial Office in Osami city, for second and final reading, waving the internal rules.
For public interest and the urgency of this resolution, the honorable Romero is passing this resolution approving the conduct of a field validation activity from 21 February to April 5, 2024 by the PSA Provincial Office in Osami city, move for its approval on the second and final reading, waving the internal rules.
Thank you, honorable Chair, approval decision number 4, a resolution approving the conduct of the entrepreneurship development seminar and rotation of consumer rights and responsibilities on the 6th February to report by the Department of Trade and Industry, Winston Office, and now here to the chairman of committee on trade, commerce, and industry, honorable Catherine Chilim, to introduce, and the committee action, honorable Chair.
The honorable Catherine Lim is now recognized by the chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I would like to pass a resolution on joint motion approving the conduct of the entrepreneurship development seminar and orientation on consumer rights and responsibilities on 26 February 2024 by the Department of Trade and Industry Provincial Office in Osami city, for first reading with reservation.
For first reading with reservations, motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair, due to its urgency, I would like to pass this on second and final reading, a resolution approving the conduct of the entrepreneurship development seminar and orientation on consumer rights and responsibilities on 26 February 2024 by the Department of Trade and Industry Provincial Office in Osami city, waving the internal rules.
Motion approved on the second and final reading, waving the internal rules as manifested by the honorable Catherine Lim. Any comment, remarks, hearing, non-motion approved on the second and final reading, waving the internal rules.
Thank you, honorable Chair, approval decision number 5, a resolution approving the biodiversity quarterly monitoring and assessment of biodiversity monitoring system and monitoring stations activities by the community environment and natural resources office in Sami city, I urge to the chairman of committee on environment, natural resources, honorable John Sakin, to introduce, and the committee action on this item, honorable Chair.
The honorable John Sakin is now recognized by the chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, honorable Chair. Honorable Chair, I move to pass a resolution approving the biodiversity quarterly monitoring and establishment of biodiversity monitoring system and monitoring stations activities by the community environment and natural resources office in Osami city, passing this on first reading with reservation, honorable Chair.
Passing this on the first reading with reservation, motion approved.
For the second and final reading, honorable Chair, with this manifestation, I move for the second and final reading, honorable Chair, waving the internal rules.
Due to the urgency of this request resolution, the honorable Sakin is passing this on the second and final reading as being manifested, the second and final reading, waving the internal rules.
Thank you, honorable Chair, approval decision number 6, a resolution approving the conduct of the division enhancement training for RSPC bound campus journalists and school paper advisors on 13/10/2024 by deep in Osami, in Osami city, and I urge to the chairman of committee on education, honorable Jason Yucote, to introduce, and the committee action, honorable Chair.
The honorable Seisel Co is now recognized by the chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Majority Floor Leader, so I am passing a resolution to approve the conduct of the division enhancement training for RSPC or the regional school press conference bound campus journalists and school paper advisors on March 13 to 15, 2024 by the DEEP Ed Osami Division here in Osami city, in their division office, for first reading with reservations, Madam Chair.
Approved the first reading with reservation.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, so the DEEP Ed Osami through the SBS, Mamnipa Arlago, sent a consultative letter to the city mayor for the conduct of the division enhancement training to students, together with their coaches or advisors from both private and public schools, who are bound for the region to compete in the search for most outstanding school paper advisors and campus journalists on May 2 to May 4 in Kagayan de Oro city, and due to the necessity of this activity as intense preparation for the third contest, Madam Chair, I move to pass this resolution to approve the conduct of the enhancement training here in Osami city, on second and final reading, waving the internal rules.
Manifested by the honorable Seisel Co to pass this on the second and final reading, we make the internal rules as a resolution, approving the conduct of the division enhancement training for RSPC bound campus journalists and school paper advisors on the 13, March 13 to 15, 2024 for the DEEP Ed Osami city, motion approved on the second and final reading, waving the internal rules.
Thank you, honorable Chair, the last, Batat Lalis, approval decision number 7, a resolution approving the conduct of a tree planting activity in celebration of World Water Day on 20/21/2024 by Metro Osami Water District, Osami city, and I urge to the chairman of committee on public treaties, honorable Chair, to introduce, and the committee action, honorable Chair.
The honorable Mercile Romero is now recognized by the chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Majority Floor Leader, Madam Chair, I move to pass this proposed resolution, a resolution approving the conduct of tree planting activity in celebration of World Water Day on March 22, 2024 by Metro Osami's Water District in Osami city, Madam Chair, passing this for first reading with reservation.
Move for its, motion for first reading with reservation.
In the interest of public service, Madam Chair, I move to pass this resolution approving the conduct of tree planting activity in celebration of World Water Day on March 22, 2024 by Metro Osami's Water District in Osami city, Madam Chair, passing this for second and final reading with reservation.
Due to the urgency of this resolution, the honorable Romero is passing this resolution approving the conduct of a tree planting activity in celebration of the World Water Day on March 22, 2024 by the Metro Osami's Water District in Osami city, move for its approval on the second and final reading, waving the internal rules. Any comment, remarks, hearing, non-motion approved on the second and final reading, waving the internal rules.
Thank you, honorable Chair, item number 10, there are no building matters permitted under this item, basis for trading, honorable Chair, so at this juncture, may I have a special privilege, three other matters concerning the PCL, by honorable, thank you, honorable Chair.
On PCL matters, the honorable Swiso is now recognized by the chair.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and Majority Floor Leader, for PCL matters, Madam Chair, I have two items, first, I would like to congratulate our newly members in good standing for Philippine Councilor's League, Osami's chapter, honorable Saney Wominal, honorable Carlo Morales, and honorable John Pidong So, for paying their membership fee, so in lieu of becoming members in good standing, I'd like to inform them that we have so many benefits being members in good standing, that also includes our medical benefits, our burial benefits, dental benefits, also including other benefits and previous. To be clear, we have claim categories, Madam Chair, for our medical benefit, for hospitalization exceeding 60,000, you can claim 20,000 as your medical benefit, for 40,000 up to 60,000 hospitalization expenses, you can get 50,000 as your medical benefit, and for hospitalization expense of 20,000 to 40,000, you can get hospitalization, a medical benefit of 10,000 pesos. So, every member in good standing can avail of a medical maximum benefit of 20,000 per hospitalization, Madam Chair, and medical claims for hospitals should be confined or admitted in the hospital, in the ITAR, not only in Osami, but in any places like Si Bu Manila, because we are only covered here on our hospitalization for Osami's hospitals only, but should they have any admission from other hospitals within the Philippines, we are covered by these benefits. And the second item, Madam Chair, is we already had the cash advances, the checks were already distributed, and should you have already in cash our checks for the upcoming Boracay trip, I'd like to request our fellow colleagues to please have it deposited to our ITI, Alagba accounts for PCL reservation, registration fee, and also kindly pay the book tickets to honorable Sepres for the advance booking of the tickets. Only Consular Linda Batyon, Consular Sepres, and Consular Lee has not yet released by the checks, the rest are ready, ready for releasing, Madam Chair, I think for today. And have it deposited right away for the registration, thank you very much.
Thank you, honorable Swiso, for your two most important information, first is the fringe benefits which will accrue to the members of the city council, and the second is your trip to Boracay, and that would be on March?
March 11.
March 11 to 13, okay. Thank you, honorable Swiso.
Honorable Chair, on the first matter mentioned by honorable Seiso, that our new members, honorable Morales, honorable John Pidong So, and honorable Wominal are already members of good standing, the PCL, so it doesn't make them eligible to attend the PCL seminar in Aklan, or this coming March 11?
Yes, it is a requirement, that's why I encourage them to pay it right away so that they could be included in the Boracay trip.
Thank you, honorable Chair.
Okay, noted.
At this juncture, we have the PCL privilege, fair on scheme matters, from our billion , the winner and dynamic chairman of the divisional scheme, honorable John Pidong So, honorable Chair.
Thank you, honorable Majority Floor Leader, but before our scheme president would have his chair, may we congratulate him for being the winner of the Chinese, Chinese New Year celebration, he won the first prize, is it like this, a car?
A bike, a bike.
Electronic bike, he won the first prize during the New Year celebration of the Chinese. Congratulations, honorable Duhailong So, now we have the floor now for you. Congratulations, honorable Duhailongso, now we have the floor now for your report.
Thank you, Majority Floor Leader and Madam Chair. Uh, tugot kinamention mani Madam Chair, uh, regarding sa celebration sa Chinese New Year. Um, siguro, I just want to grab this opportunity to extend my gratitude to the, uh, uh, presidents, officers, uh, members, and the board of directors sa Osami City Filipino-Chinese Chamber of Commerce. Okay, na-take and again. Anyway, Madam Chair, I just want to inform this August body that last, um, February 15, 2024, natapos na ang ipahayon ng mandatory training para sa mag, uh, SK secretary and SK treasurer, nagipahayon sa third floor, sa health office. And with that, Madam Chair, I would like to extend my gratitude to, uh, Honorable Chair, Vice Mayor Bibinari, ang namihatag og, um, inspirational message in behalf ni Mayor Indi Waminal, na naghatag og dugang kadasi sa tuang mga kabatanunan ng mga secretary and treasurer na mupursu sa pag-alagad, silahang mag, uh, fellow, mga kabatanunan, silahang tagcha-tag sa kamangang maranggay. Ang mandatory training, Madam Chair, is required as the section 27 sa RA number 10742, or other known as the SK Reform Act of 2015, ogi amendaro sa RA 11768. Ga ang tanang ng mga elected and appointed, including the SK secretary and treasurer, will undergo the mandatory training. And, um, with that also, Madam Chair, I just want to extend our gratitude to Mayor Indi Waminal. Tungod kay dili lang sa kanun na'y suporta ni Mayor Indi Waminal, kundi, uh, during sa mandatory training, gilibre ang atuang mag, uh, SK secretary and treasurer, wala'y registration fee, nagipangayo ang atuang LGO under the leadership of our good city mayor. Um, is a locate the mayor, hindi ang foods, snacks, and other things, mga materials para sa tuang mag, uh, SK secretary and treasurer. And, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, I think that's all for the SK matters, thank you.
Thank you, honorable Duhailongso, for your vital information, noted.
Yes, Honorable Chair, I, I was not around during the Chinese New Year, I, I missed that event at the Grand Pavilion. And I'm glad that our SK, uh, president, honorable, uh, Duhailongso, was very lucky on that night, winning, uh, motor car.
E car.
Uh, e, e car. It might cost more than 1,000 pesos, more than 1,000. So, uh, with that, with, with my congratulations, I am very willing to attend his celebration anytime, Honorable Chair. On his winning that E car, but he is not sitting, uh, now. I'm willing to attend his celebration anytime today or, uh, afterwards. Uh, his celebration of his luck last Chinese New Year. Uh, Honorable Chair, at this juncture, may we have the P C L members, here on matters concerning the indigenous people, honorable Baye, Lina Batillon, Honorable Chair.
E B C.
Uh, E B C matters, uh, we have no, uh, our E B C president is not around at the moment. Perhaps, the E B C past chairman could relate to us any other matter with official knowledge, Honorable Chair, Honorable Chair Ramiro?
Honorable Chair Ramiro, you are now recognized.
Uh, for E B C matters, and then for now, Madam Chair.
Okay, noted, Madam Chair.
So with that, Honorable Chair, I, we have, we have the P C L members here on matters concerning the indigenous people, honorable Baye, Lina Batillon, Honorable Chair.
For matters concerning the indigenous people, may I recognize honorable Batillon?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Majority Floor Leader. Madam Chair, last meeting na mo si February 15, ang among usangan na agenda, Madam Chair, is about sa update sa sinsos sa mga tribong subanin, uh, every municipality sa Osami's Occidental. Ikaduhang, uh, gikinahanglan na mo sa, uh, mag-meeting every municipality and city sa mga IPMR. Uh, gikinahanglan pod na, na agin may schedule pag-meeting. So ang among namitinga dito sa Osami's is quarterly meeting, uh, every second week sa Ikaduhang. For example, quarterly is February, uh, January, February among schedule. So, kin, uh, sa isa katui, kinahanglan na aming meeting ang mahimo upat ka, kaupat, ikaupat nga beses.
Four times a day.
Okay, second, uh, Madam Chair, next, uh, karoon kami nga 22, Madam Chair, na ano pod may meeting para sa preparation sa among baliklantao sa lokal na giya sa mga mahimo IPMR sa Osami's Occidental. That's all, Madam Chair.
Noted, Madam Chair, your reports, honorable Batillon.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, be prepared. Thus, item number 15, I yield to my colleagues for any important announcement on any relevant, um, information, Honorable Chair, if there are any.
Any other matters to be considered now?
Uh, may I, we have the, may I give the floor to honorable Waminal for setting manifestation, Honorable Chair?
Honorable Waminal, do you have anything to share or to report?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Majority Floor Leader, um, good afternoon everyone. This is an inquiry, um, I rise today to address, um, the matter that has been brought to my attention as well as to express the concerns of all, um, several constituents who have sought assistance regarding their, um, apprehension for smoking while driving. The issue at hand invokes the application of Republic Act 9211, also known as the Tobacco, um, Regulation Act of 2003, which prohibits, um, smoking in public places. This law reinforced by Executive Order 26 upholds the rights of individuals to breathe clean air and reduces the public's exposure to secondhand smoke. However, there is no specific mention of smoking while driving a private single motorcycle in the law and neither in the list of LTO, um, driving fines and violations posted in LTO portal pages. So in light of grievances raised by constituents regarding their apprehension merely for smoking while driving, so I hereby request the secretariat to furnish me and this steam body a copy with any relevant, uh, city ordinance that makes sense concerning the matter at hand. This will aid in our thorough review and assessment of the situation and will ensure that we are fully informed when deliberating on this issue and to ascertain whether there have been any instances of undue or arbitrary treatment in relation to smoking while driving. It is incumbent upon us, public servants, to ensure that the laws and regulations are implemented fairly and just, justly. Let us uphold the rights and welfare of our constituents and ensure that the laws are implemented in a manner that respects the fundamental principles of justice and equity. Again, Madam Chair, um, under Republic Act, um, 9211, also known as Tobacco Regulation Act of 2003 reinforced by Executive Order 26 that there is no specific mention of smoking while driving a private single motorcycle in the law neither in the list of LTO, um, driving fines and violations. So with that, Madam Chair, again, I hereby request the secretariat to furnish a copy, uh, relevant to the city ordinance, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, honorable Waminal, for your information, vital information. May we request the secretariat to please, um, furnish us a copy for any, um, review or ordinances regarding this matter. And if needed be, uh, we can pass the necessary, uh, ordinances to support the manifestation of honorable Waminal and concern. That's very important.
Yes, Honorable Chair, we will do it the soonest possible time, Madam Chair.
Okay, noted, Madam Chair, thank you.
Honorable Chair, I guess there are no more important matter which my colleagues would like to bring forward this August body. I am now consent to proceed to my most unpleasant task this afternoon. I move to adjourn the investigation, Honorable Chair.